To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the flag of the state of Mexico and is the symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Okay, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your guidance as we deliberate on the matters before us. Grant us wisdom, clarity, and discernment to make decisions that uphold justice, fairness, and the well-being of all those we represent. Help us to work together with respect and understanding, setting aside personal differences to focus on the greater good. May our words and actions reflect integrity and compassion. Bless this county, its residents, and those who dedicate themselves to its growth and prosperity. May our efforts today lead to progress, unity, and a better future for us all. In your name we pray, amen. Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. It's a little bit smaller crowd today because a lot of us are in Santa Fe. With that being said, I think we'll move into the timed agenda and public comments or announcements. Seeing none, we'll move into service awards. And as I understand, Ms. Coleman is not with us today, correct? Okay, well, we still want to recognize Ms. Bernadette Coleman of the clerk's office, five years. Very good. I guess no need for pictures today. All right, so we're moving into trailing agenda. Our first item is approval of commission meeting minutes for January 7th, 2025. Any comments, questions, anything to edit?
I move to approve the meeting for January 7th minutes. Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
And Trost?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the expense approval report for December 2020.
Wait, wait, wait. We have Ernie. Ernie's on the phone. Announce your presence.
Carlson, how do you vote?
If you could, if you could, please speak up because it's not coming through real clear.
Carlson, how would you vote on the approval of the commission minutes for January 7th?
Yeah.
Sorry, Ernie. All right, our second item, expense approval report for December 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yeah.
Trost?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the purchase card approval report for December 2024. Questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase card approval report for December 2024.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yeah.
Trost?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, our second item on the trailing agenda is the fiscal year 2024-25 budget adjustments. Ms. Roberta and County Manager Mike Gallagher.
Ma'am Chair, Commissioners, good morning. This item before you is a budget adjustment to increase a line item to cover our invoice for the multi-line insurance that Eddy County has through New Mexico counties. As you know, during the budget development process, we do not yet have the invoices of the exact cost from New Mexico counties for the upcoming fiscal year. We have their invoice, their invoice came in about $120,000 higher than the amount we have budgeted for this fiscal year. So, prior to approving the invoice for payment, I'm bringing this item to the board for approval to adjust that particular line item, and I'll stand for questions that the board may have, or sit for questions, rather, that the board may have. You should say stand, so no.
So, this is through New Mexico counties, correct?
Yep, a little bit of history, ma'am Chair, Commissioners. As you know, you have workers' compensation insurance through New Mexico counties, as well as the county's law enforcement program and our multi-line program. So, our, the county's liability insurance, our property insurance, those particular items are through New Mexico counties. And what we have is the invoice for this calendar, for this fiscal year. And as I mentioned, as the staff is preparing the budget, right, we did not yet have that, and they did not yet have that invoice for the upcoming fiscal year. They received that invoice in December. And what I would like to do is ensure that the board approves an increase to that line item prior to paying the invoice. That line item right now is currently budgeted at about $2.2 million, and we will need to raise it to 2.3 in order to pay this invoice. This is pretty customary and fairly standard, and this is what other counties throughout New Mexico are seeing.
I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 24-25 budget adjustment.
I'll second.
I second, sir.
Thank you, we have a motion in two seconds, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trost?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our undersheriff's salary adjustment presented by Sheriff Hutchins. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am Chair, Commissioners. I come to you this morning for a salary adjustment on the undersheriff's current salary. After careful review and taking office and before holding that position, a chief executive or chief law enforcement officer in our area, the pay is underpaid. So, I come to you before, as you can see, I've got several, I guess, salary analysis that are in there. And with that being said, I extend for any questions.
Sheriff Hutchinson, do you have any, and I see what you have posted on the agenda, but do you have any data that shows like mid-max salaries or anything like that?
What, what I have here is showing the range of, you know, those salaries for, for the executive officers, for the law enforcement executive officers, your chiefs of police, your undersheriffs, your sheriffs, that's a pretty broad range. They usually is, and you can see it, they range from, for the chief of police, for Carlsbad, it ranges from 150 to 164 depending on experience. What I'm showing here is, I'm wanting to show that Eddy County has, you know, currently an undersheriff that has a very vast knowledge of experience, you know, leaving as sheriff, coming in as my undersheriff. So, that far-right number is actually obtainable very easily. Sheriff, I have no beef about the number there, but, and especially for our undersheriff's qualifications for that, but what I'm afraid of with this is this based on qualifications and benchmarks that, like years of service, so many years of service brought him up from where he has to here, and then certain other qualifications brought him up that much more and that much more. Because what I'm afraid of doing right here is approving this and letting the, the next undersheriff after him walk into something he may not be qualified for. I understand that, Commissioner, you know, and, and given that particular aspect of it, I feel currently that this pay is, is market value for our area, you know. As you can see, if you go all the way down to the Hobbs Deputy Chief position, which is the very last one, that is a current position that is open right now. I guess if we could create a range of experience that would allow for that, but I feel that that 168 is what is currently our market value for a chief law enforcement, or an executive law enforcement officer in our area. And these numbers are only in 70 mile radius. I'm not pulling anything outside of, you know, Hobbs, Carlsbad, you know, Roswell area, that's about as far as I'm going.
More, not necessarily a question, but just for more information, would you kind of explain to anybody that may not quite understand the role of the undersheriff? You know, is the sheriff's salary has just increased? And to those that aren't dealing with it on a regular basis, just understanding what the true role of the undersheriff is on a day-to-day basis?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. So, the, the undersheriff is, is the chief operations officer of the sheriff's office. He handles the day-to-day operations, everything personnel-related, everything to do with, he's the equivalency of, of a department head. You know, he can sign all the same forms that I can sign, he can swear, he has that ability to swear in all the deputies. So, in the, in my absence, he takes over that office. And before anything actually comes to me as the sheriff, he's the one that's handling and delegating that particular aspect of it. So, as the undersheriff, he really is the one that is, you know, handling every aspect of how the sheriff office runs from Sunday to Sunday.
And then approximately, how many, how many employees is the undersheriff managing at any given time?
So, right now, we're 78 sworn, and then we have another about 14 to 15 civilian staff, so we're a little under 100 right now.
Okay. And fully staffed would be how many?
It'd be over, if we did fully staff, we'd be right out of 100.
Okay. Which is, I mean, by far probably our biggest department?
Yes.
Correct?
As far as personnel.
Okay, thank you. County manager, any input, comments, anything?
Sure, ma'am, Sheriff Commissioners, Sheriff. So, I know this item was under development last calendar year with the transitional manager, and then Sheriff Cage and Mr. Hutchinson, now Sheriff Hutchinson. I believe that the information that the sheriff provided here is, is accurate, one. Second, I think what you're seeing here is the need to have competitive salaries for our chief law enforcement officials, and I believe that extends to all county employees, right? So, I believe that, I know I've already had some discussions with county staff and commissioners about the need to look at the entire county. Certainly, if the board were to take action on this today, that certainly still allows us to look at salaries and pay scales for all employees. I believe that Sheriff, one of the items that you had shared with me, and it was about the timing in which particularly with Sheriff Cage in retirement, coming out of retirement, right? So, when Mr. Cage was sheriff, he was able to receive both his salary as an elected official and his salary as, or his pension. Now, being the undersheriff, he's a county employee, so he's ineligible to do that, both receive your pension and to receive your salary. So, part of the timeliness behind this is that it comes on the tails, the tail of the salary adjustments for the elected officials, and I think that's part of the time that you have here, and with him adjusting his own income, previously being able to receive that pension and salary as a sheriff, now not being eligible to, to receive both. But I believe here what the sheriff presented is, you know, hits the mark in terms of what you're seeing for the chiefs of police and the undersheriffs. And I could speak to a little bit what Lee County did, what their undersheriff, and what I, my understanding is what you're going to see in the future, and I don't have any, anything else there.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments, questions?
Well, I, this is Commissioner Carlson. I, I think that under the Sheriff Cage, we moved our law enforcement agency, the Sheriff's Department, so far forward, and they're well-trained and done that, and that's a, that is a, it's all because of the things that, that the current sheriff and, and our now undersheriff did while he was in office. And I think that, that we need to continue that, and I think that to get somebody with this qualification and his knowledge of how our Sheriff's Department works, that is a small price, I, so I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Ernie. All right, well.
I move to approve the undersheriff's salary adjustment.
Motion, we have a second?
But I'd also like to add that we do need to, very soon, like in the next few meetings or less, look at all the county positions that department heads and everything, because I think we're, Eddy County is behind on a lot of it.
I can understand that.
Can you repeat that for Ernie?
Yeah, Ernie, he said that he thought we ought to, keep in mind, we need to look at these other salaries for other directors, et cetera, that was discussed, not stop here, but in the, over the next few meetings, maybe take a look back at that.
I, I think that that's, that's a good idea. The thing that I, that I would encourage us to do is I know that, that the current county manager needs to be a part of those conversations, because he has, we need to, he's had a chance now to look at all our, our department heads and stuff, and so I think that that is a, would be a high goal.
I agree, I think, I mean, obviously, you would be a part of all of those conversations and looking at like any kind of analysis or market analysis of the region, but we just, we want to ensure that, that we as a commission are going to be taking a look at this. And so, with that, we have a motion, do we have a second?
We have a second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Trost?
Yes.
Commissioners, I can't speak for any other department heads, but I'm prepared to have the, to talk with the county manager for those increases for the entire agency. I have a whole spreadsheet ready to go, so.
Wonderful, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, next item, discussion of permitting alcohol consumption for a specific event at the Eddy County Fairgrounds, County Manager Gallagher.
Ma'am Chair, Commissioners, good morning once again. Little bit of background, the county has a resolution that was passed in January of 2000. This resolution outlines that alcohol consumption and sales is prohibited on county property, with the exception of obtaining, first obtaining a spe, or let me rephrase it, alcohol consumption and sales may happen on county property after the county commission issues a special use permit for that particular event. So, that resolution was from 2000. We have a rodeo event at the Eddy County Fairgrounds that's being looked at right now, and that's being scheduled for the last weekend of March, and one of the, the organizer of that event would like to have alcohol sales, both on the portion of the fairgrounds that is owned by Eddy County and the portion that is not owned by Eddy County. So, looking at the, what the rules and regulations are for alcohol consumption on county property, we see that the county's alcohol policy requires that first a special use permit would be issued. This is a discussion item to see if the commission would like the staff and the producer of that event to apply for a special use permit. I'll tell you, there's no, I do not see any procedures or anything that outlines the process for a special use permit. So, I would, my suggestion is that at the, if this is something that the board would like to, would be interested in issuing, at the February, at the first meeting in February of the county, we could have a, a resolution authorizing a special use permit for that event. And I'm bringing this as a discussion item because I did not yet see any, I've not found any procedures or steps that the county has in place and issue, you know, that, for to issue a special use permit, so I thought I would bring this to the board as, of course, as a discussion item.
Also a site map, too, I might be a little green, but to have a site map of what county property and what's non-county, because if, if they can have a license on the non-county, we may be redundant in this, but we may be better to issue it as a county, I don't know, that's what I want to look at and see where they're at.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, just as one who has a little experience with this, the state has a process for this, and the producer, really the, the person who holds the liquor license is the person who technically applies for the special use permit, and the state application requires the county or the local governing body to sign off. And I think, I think the producer just needs to follow that procedure, because in that application, you receive, you have to have a site map, you have to outline your security and all of, there's, there's a whole handful of things that would allow us to have a better look at what she's trying to do. And I, I think she wants this to be on the county side, because the private side is just a little too far from the rodeo arena itself. I've been working with her just a little bit. So, I think that the state has a good process in place, and if she gathered that information, completed an application, and came to us with a, with that application, we could approve it or not, and then the state would have to finally approve it.
For a little information, Ernie, isn't it true, a number of years ago, PBR came here and the, and we actually went through that process, and I can't remember which local, I mean, we've done this twice, I believe. Pro Bull Riding Association wouldn't put on the event unless we had alcohol, so they could take it into the stands.
The thing that we've done on that is, it's been roped off to a certain area.
Yes. And, and the map, the map requires you to identify that?
Well, what they did was, you couldn't consume, you, you could buy, you could go in and have a beer, but you had to drink that beer in a certain area, you couldn't take it into the stands. That's the way that all these work down at the sheriff's office.
And that may not be what they want. They may more be wanting to have the alcohol drunk in, to be allowed to be invited in the stands, which, as long as they follow the process enough.
If it's an enclosed area and they identify that.
Right.
The, years ago, when smoking on the Pecos occurred, they would have a beer garden on the fair, on the private fairground side, and they still have to receive permission from the county. The local governing body has to sign off no matter what. So.
We, we tried to pass a resolution, how long ago was that, Adrian, 1918, when was that? And it just died, you know, they, went, picked it back and forth, but we had some people from, that didn't want alcohol served anywhere, period, and so it just never went any further. And so, that's why we have this one, but it does leave, allow the county some leeway based on the resolution that was passed. And I think Mike's right, we need to take a look at maybe updating these things, so there are going to be other things come up in the future.
Well, and it does seem that we are having more, you know, public events, you know, city events locally, so, yeah, if we need to take a look and maybe revamp this, I think would be a good idea. Thank you, any other comments?
Yeah, I think that one of the things that we get into is, we can't, we can't look at, I, I guess take a look at one certain deal and do something different than what we're going to allow all the, so if we're going to allow open sales at, on the, on the county fairgrounds for this, are we going to allow open sales of alcohol for other functions, like at the sheriff's office and other places? That might happen, because you can't do one, to me, you can't do one thing for one place and another for another.
Right.
I agree with that, it needs to be blanketed across everything, there needs to be one standard.
So, the policy we set needs to be the policy for all events that we agreed to sell alcohol in.
I think for this event, it would go under this.
Our current.
Yes.
Resolution.
So, ma'am Chair, what, what I would suggest to the board is that at our next board meeting, we'll have a resolution that would, that would allow the county commission to authorize a special use permit for this particular event, and then at the following one, maybe the second meeting in February, a discussion item on a particular, on a new resolution that sets, that sets forth, you know, the items in which the county would like to see regarding, you know, just what you would like to see in a special use permit, and whether or not you're open to allowing alcohol sales on all, you know, county property, and what, what parameters this board would like to see with that, if any.
Perfect.
I would add the, provided she has her application at the next, you know, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, she, she needs to have her information together.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and move into the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
No.
Okay. Any questions? Anything we need to pull from our resolution and agreement agenda?
I just have a question on item four on the resolution, R25-12, the committees, boards, commission appointments, and designations, do we need to discuss that publicly, or is that something that, that we, because there's, there's several vacancies on those boards, do we, what, what's the proper procedure for that?
Commissioners, if you like, we can pull that item to discuss it. This just has that we have a number of different boards and committees, such as the DWI council. We can go through all the boards and committees if you like, or?
Can we pull that item and just, if there's vacancies?
Yeah.
Any member of the commission can sign up for that board, request to be on that board, and then we can approve it at the next meeting? If that's?
I think we can do that, yes, sir.
Yeah, that will give us some time to kind of look over the vacancies and the, the meeting dates, and then we can make a decision next meeting?
Just ratify it.
I, I can tell you, Commissioners, what we have here, it's not all the boards and committees, you're going to have the DWI advisory council, so previously that was, the vice chair was appointed to that. That's one, the next one's going to be read-up. I think that one would be, I guess, appointing the, either chair, or previously it's been Commissioner Bowen, and then the county manager, I think this would be looking at confirming that, and those are the two that I see right now on this particular resolution.
I did see a couple of other vacancies that need to be filled, that.
Like Pecos Valley Water user, there's.
Eddy County Finance Committee, Sullivan's, and actually, I'm, I, my name is on the Planning and Development Committee, and I'll, I'll need to get off of that, that's not, I don't think Commissioners are supposed to be on that, and I have a recommendation, talk about it at the right time.
We can bring this back to the next board.
Okay. Can I have a motion to remove item R-25-12, 2025 committees, boards, and commission appointments from today's agenda?
So, move.
A second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trost?
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented, with the exception of R25-12.
Second.
Thank you, motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trost?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, travel request consent agenda, anything that we need to discuss further?
I actually just have a question on item A on there, just the air ranger, airboat training.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am Chair, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, Commissioners. What was your question?
Airboat in Eddie County, just.
So.
That's my question.
So, um, we have high rates of flooding. We actually had a flood that swept a car away over on Radio and Boyd. Victim was trapped inside. We were trying to make access. Um, we had actually made a request for additional swift water texts throughout the state. And Burnaleo County was just coming into town with their airboat. We had deemed that that patient was not viable at that point and we had a second rescue with two people stuck on a hood down off of Haroon Road. Um, we attempted to access. Obviously, it's throw, row and then go. So, we tried to throw rope. Our boats weren't going to be, our little airboats weren't going to be sufficient. And the boat that we currently have for the lake is not sufficient for the swift water. They were able to put their boat in. We went right over, picked the two people off. The next day it dried out and there was about a thirty foot hole right at the front of the truck. So, just at a matter of time or something shifting, it would have been a whole different outcome. And having that resource over four hours away and as much flooding as we have, we felt it was adequate to get ours. Um, we have worked with Mosaic in the past. The biggest concern for them is they use them for the ponds and they're not trained to operate in the swift water. So, we made one purchase and then we'll kind of see how it goes. But we have had a lot of situations where that boat would have resolved the situation a lot faster than setting up the rope systems or putting our personnel in the water and taking that risk of something coming down and sweeping us away and causing a whole different issue.
Is Burnaleo the closest county with another airboat like this?
Yeah, all of them are out there, right? The airboats?
Yeah, the only other three are state or all around Burnaleo. He has one for his ability and one other county.
Yeah, because two of them were just purchased recently and we purchased ours. So, yeah, everything's pretty much up around Albuquerque area.
So, this could benefit Lee and?
Yeah, so the incident in Roswell, this would have been an ideal tool to have available.
Close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just in the past, evaluating the FEMA map, we are one of the few counties that used to be, uh, black, which is a high flood danger. It's kind of an odd thing, but usually annually, we do have two to three pretty significant floods. And, um, I know back prior to my time, twenty thirteen, fourteen, I think there were some very significant flood events. That actually blocked the highway. So, we start running into issues getting from Carlsbad to Artesia. So, that's one of the things we've looked at is having one stationed north and one south. That way, if we incur flooding on both ends where we've got to make recoveries versus launching helicopters and calling in the National Guard and doing all of that stuff, we would have those available resources to get people out of those hazardous conditions. So, when they're unable to shelter in place.
I think the explanation was good considering that we're a big old desert.
Yeah, it's weird. It is weird. I actually have a picture of where you go, the cavern is completely full of water and that was, that was a freak deal. So.
Wow.
No, thank you, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve travel request consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Here.
Trous?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, moving into item seven, emergency business. It looks like we have none. Uh, any legislative comments, announcements, updates? Okay, how about elected official department comments, announcements or updates?
Real quick, we're not going to take up too much of your time, Commissioners. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to let Brandy do most of the talking here. Uh, our DWI program, I wanted to just give you a couple of quick little items. Uh, within the next couple of weeks, we hope to be moving into an upgrade on our DIS system to go to ArtMap Pro. It's been a fight trying to get us there and, and get this thing actually implemented. Every time I schedule a meeting, something comes up, last meeting to get this thing moving. We couldn't make contact on Teams. It just disappeared for both of us. I've got a couple of C employees working toward their certified flood planning manager to, to help us have more people available for that. And something really big that I, I really do want to share is with the help of Jason and his crew and they've allowed us six roll-offs that we can use for helping people clean up properties. We, we don't do it for free because of anti-donation clauses, but through, through that and working with his department and the landfill, one location, we've managed to clean up six thousand tires off of a, off of a property. We're working on another one now that has about three and a half acres worth of tires. Uh, and they're pulling eight loads a week off of that, that property cleaning those tires up. And, and this has been going out and, and not forcing people to do it, but getting, getting them voluntarily to work with us. They're paying for the roll-off still. So, it's been a good thing. We're, we're getting some really nasty properties with tires cleaned up and, and knock on wood, we'll keep it moving in that direction. Uh, one other quick thing I want to add right here is if you guys want those, that is photographs of the fairgrounds. And it's labeled on there what is fairgrounds and what is fair association, for what's Eddie County, what's fair association. So, the, the last thing, and, and county manager had asked us to bring this forward to you on this Arriva Live tour with the DWI program. I'm going to let Brandy hit on that and kind of give you guys a real quick brief on, on that Arriva, Arriva tour.
So, the Arriva Live tour is a, it's a fully functioning vehicle. Um, they will bring it to, so right now Loving School has given us the okay to do it. We are waiting for files back. Okay, uh, we will know by Thursday. So, it's a fully functioning vehicle. They bring it into the school. Um, it has monitors on this side, this side. And the students wear, um, like VR goggles. And all it is, is a virtual simulation of them either texting and driving, driving impaired. And it keeps track of like how many overturns or if you pick up your phone. Just to teach them the dangers of distracted or impaired driving. And at the end, they get a full printout, a citation of what they did wrong, tips on how to not drive distracted, driving impaired. And, uh, they also get their picture taken with the school logo, either the county logo or our logo. And it is six hours, the full program, and it runs up to about two hundred students.
Wow. That's awesome.
Artesia included in that?
Uh, so I reached out to Artesia. They're scheduled, didn't allow it for the dates that they are coming to Eddie County. But they did tell me that next year, uh, they would like to do it.
Good.
Wonderful.
And working, Brandy can correct me, but it's my understanding from conversation with Deborah as well. Through their program at the DWI office over here, they're working on getting our own set of VR goggles for simulation and possibly even a simulator itself for, for our own use here. So, hopefully in the near future, we'll have those as well.
Wonderful.
Any questions?
Uh, no questions. I'm, I'm so happy to hear that people are participating in using these roll-off bins and cleaning up. And we have a long way to go, but we're starting somewhere. So, thank you. And thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right.
Madam Chair, Commissioner. So, I just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates. We're pulling some final statistics from last year. Still trying to go through them. So, it looks like we ended the year with three thousand four hundred fifty-seven emergency calls. We did twenty thousand plus hours of training. Um, we had over six hundred, or we had six hundred and sixty-three properties inspected by our fire inspector, um, which, just to remind you, those are usually multiples with follow-ups, things like that. So, we're working on a good hard count. And so far, just for September, October, we had ninety smoke alarms installed and twenty-five fire extinguishers. So, um, we stay pretty busy with that every month. But that's just a couple of things. And then I wanted to let you all know that I was selected by the state fire marshal's office along with Jamie Gonzalez from Valencia County to represent the state on the National Volunteer Fire Council Board of Directors. So, that's a new role that I'll be taking on to try to help the state. And that helps with recruitment, retention of volunteers. There's a lot of benefits for volunteers. So, we're trying to go around to other counties and get that information out and also secure it for our personnel as well. So.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The alarms and smoke, and fire extinguishers, where are those installed? Are those, and those are new?
Yeah, so those are new installations inside residents. Um, and in some of them, we found smoke detectors as old as nineteen seventy-eight with the date on them whenever we want to take them out. We did actually have an incident with a person right after we did it with the Red Cross where they had some food on the stove. It stepped away for a minute, smoke alarm went off, came back in, found the kitchen on fire. Was able to use the fire extinguisher and isolate the damage strictly to the stove and the cabinetry around it. So, it's definitely a reduction in property damage. So, that's our objective with it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Chief, could you talk a little bit about the graduation that was held on Saturday night with your four cadets?
Yep. So, we, we just had a graduation Saturday night. Um, we had five cadets that were able to graduate. So, that means that they've completed their fire aspect of the fire academy and they've now moved on to the stations. And four of the five will continue through EMT basic training. The other one is actually licensed out of the state of Texas. So, he's in the process of doing his reciprocity to transition over to New Mexico licensure. So, that'll give us five additional. Um, and then we have four pending with one of those being a certified, three will need an academy. And then we have two additional pending that we're waiting for our lieutenant testing that we did last week. So, with those two promotions happening, that'll bring those two in and that'll leave us at one short. So, out of our fifty-nine allocated positions total within our department, we will be down to one on the line as a firefighter and a division chief.
Wow. Wonderful.
Slowly crawling back.
Ma'am Chair, he's leaving out something that I thought was kind of interesting during the graduation ceremony on Saturday. So, bef- right before it was, the event was taking place to recognize the graduates and you had, you know, uh, the staff throughout the fire department, throughout all different fire stations there, uh, recognizing them for that graduation, there was a huge brush fire. So, yeah, but all the, you want to talk a little bit just about that?
Anytime we try.
As we're pulling up, you can see on the distance, and we're left, not everyone, but.
Every time we try to plan something, that's our rule. We try not to plan anything and let too many people know because when we do, it seems like right when the event's about to start, everything happens. So, we actually had a structured fire down here, um, which was an animal shelter. And then, uh, we had, not animal shelter, but a shelter for chickens, coot. So, sorry, let me clear that one out. Yeah, chicken coot. There you go. So, heat lamp, that's why we did our post on Sunday about heat lamps. We want everybody to be aware. So, um, we had that. And then at the same time, we had a report of a brush fire. Looked to be pretty big and it was actually the haboob moving in with all the dust blowing. But it was over in a highly populated area and it looked like it was going to be worse than it was. So, it all, it all worked out to not be anything and we were able to continue on the graduation and, and get through it. So. But yes, they, they were definitely busy right at the time that we needed to get started. So, we had to adapt and overcome.
In their like gear, their like graduation gear?
Yeah, they were already.
Attire.
Yeah. And we actually had a promotion that he made it back right in time. Steven Sarmanto, he just promoted to captain from lieutenant. So.
Well, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you all very much. If you have any questions, don't ever hesitate to give me a call on my cell phone.
Thank you, Chief Matt. Any other, uh, department comments? None? All right. Uh, county manager.
Uh, ma'am chair, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, today I'll be headed up to Santa Fe later today uh, for the session and the Mexico Counties Conference and I'll be back on Friday. So, yeah.
Thank you. We'll save travels. It's very cold up there. All right. Uh, county commissioner's comment?
Yeah, so Saturday was a four H shoot at Eddie County Fair, at the Eddie County Shooting Range. The work out there going on, the addition to the complex is really coming along. There was one gentleman out there. He was the one man gang out there putting insulation and tin on this thing while we're out there shooting. And I thought, man, I felt bad for the guy because he was, he was getting after it. But the work's coming along really well. The facility looks great. Um, and I want to give a big old shout out to, uh, Jason and, and his crews for, for making that happen and, uh, taking care of other business that's been around the county too. So, pat on the back for them.
Thank you. Commissioner Klein?
Um, the Reno Air Racing Association will be at our offices in Artesia a little bit later today. And I've asked Mr. Gallagher to attend that meeting with the CEO. Um, I think the event is going to, although it's taking place in Roswell, I think it's going to have a significant impact on the rest of, or all of Eddie County. Um, and, um, I hope that they will come at a later date and make a presentation here. Tell us a little bit more about the event.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson, any comments from you?
Uh, just everybody that's coming up to Santa Fe today, be careful. There's supposed to be snow clarity forty percent through, I think, late afternoon. So, and just be careful because I was up, come up, when I got up yesterday, uh, it snowed only about fifty miles south of Bonn and all the way to, uh, just past Squares Corners. So, just be careful.
The worst area.
Yeah. I'm glad you made it safely, Ernie. Thank you. Commissioner Bowen?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, start off by just congratulating President Trump on the inauguration and congratulating the United States for what's about to come. As legislative session kicks off, I'd like to encourage people to be aware of the bills that are going through, participate. Reach out to your representatives, reach out to your senators. If you don't feel comfortable reaching out to them, reach out to one of us and we can get your message passed along. But these, this sixty day session, there's a lot of stuff going through. Just be aware of what's happening as it's happening and, um, try to participate as it's going on rather than grapping about it after it's already happened. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. McCroskey and the Public Works Department for their cleanup efforts with those tires. That is a significant cleanup and something that the community needs. With Ms. Brandy and the Arriva Live, I think it's a great concept. I would also like to see if we could look at expanding that beyond the schools into the industries, um, within the county. I think it would be really good for some of the oil and gas industries to be able to put that out there with the texting and the simulations, texting, driving, impaired driving. I think that would be a big eye-opening experience. Maybe next year we can set something up to where we get a little more involvement there. And lastly, over the weekend, I had conversation and discussion with several constituents and residents regarding property taxes saying that the commission was voting to or had raised property taxes. First, I want to say that that is not true. Um, the commission has never, since I have been on the commission, we have not voted to raise property taxes. There has been property tax increases, but that's in response to the assessed values of homes in our community rising. That is a victim of the suc- us being a victim of our own success as a community with the industry and the influx of the population. I personally would never vote to raise property taxes and I don't believe that anybody on this board would do so either. That also led to a discussion about county roads and areas that may need some attention. Guys, that's what we're here for. Feel free to reach out to us directly. Let us know where the complaints are. We will take a look at them. If you don't want to reach out to us, you can get on the county website. We have a road complaint portal. There you go. Thank you.
It can remain anonymous?
It, it can remain anonymous. You can put your road, the, the road, the complaint, that goes directly to the Public Works Department. It, it can remain anonymous. You can put your road, the, the road, the complaint, that goes directly to the Public Works Department. We are really responsive to taking care of those, obviously not when it's freezing, but everything that is put in is something that is taken seriously by this commission and the county in general. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowen. Well, um, kind of, uh, working off of what Commissioner Bowen said, um, our legislative session does start today. And we wish our representatives for Eddie County all the best as they move forward in their committees and these important bills that are important to New Mexico, but also Eddie County. Um, I would also like to just recognize this is our second meeting of, um, of your terms. And so we're kind of in it. We're, we're full on ahead here, so I'm very excited about that. Um, I hope that everybody that is traveling to Santa Fe, that they are very safe, um, you know, and mindful of the work that they're, they're doing right now. Um, aside from that, I agree. I think that this cleanup effort, I took a ride around the loop bypasses yesterday. I like to do it from time to time and just see what's going on. And, um, I'm still so upset by all the trash and everything that I see, especially at some of these important intersections. And it made me think maybe we could put some roll-off bins or something in some areas. And maybe they'll, when they're tossing their beer cans, they'll just toss them right in there, you know? Yeah, so, uh, anyway, but I do appreciate all the, the cleanup efforts that are going on around town. Um, aside from that, I wish everybody, um, just a good two weeks, stay warm, bring your animals inside. It's very cold out there. Um, I think we're still going to be in the teens tonight. When I woke up this morning, it said it was twelve, it feels like two. So just stay warm out there, bundle, bundle your kiddos up. And with that, that's all I have. So, um, we will now move into executive session. Um, it says the board may go into executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, section ten dash fifteen dash one dash eight, which authorizes the board of county commissioners to go into executive session to discuss real property.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trost?
Yes.
Thank you.
About how long do y'all think?
Thirty minutes?
Thirty?
Maybe fifteen minutes.
So say fifteen.
Let's say fifteen.
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.